All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We want to call this meeting, Little Rock Planning Commission Meeting, called to order on May 9th, 2024. So we want to develop and see if we have a quorum. Can we get a roll call, please? This is a roll call vote for the planning commission meeting for May 9th, 2024. Brown?
Yes.
Art?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges? Lundey? Commissioner Lundey? McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Here.
Samad? Commissioner Samad? Vogel?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Russell? Commissioner Russell? Vickers?
Present.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Moving along, we want to everybody had a chance to look at the minutes. So right now, we would like to get a roll call for approval of the minutes, please.
Make a motion to approve the previous meeting's minutes?
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second? Roll call. Brown?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Hodges? Commissioner Hodges? Person?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. Before we move to the consent agenda, I want to turn it over to the city attorney's office. We have an item on the consent approval. This is item number five. That's item number five S dash one nine six three. We're going to move that to the consent deferral. So I want to turn it over now to the city attorney's office.
Thank you, Chairman Vickers. Commissioners, good afternoon. As you're aware, the city attorney issued an information alert yesterday, and the city's been informed of a lawsuit that may be the partially the subject matter of this application. And therefore, the city attorney's office would like the commission to allow a one-month deferral on this item so that we can do a thorough review of the complaint and also get with the planning department and make decisions in how we want to move forward. And so I would ask the commission to make a motion to remove item number five from the consent agenda to the consent deferral.
Thank you very much, Sean.
You're welcome.
I would like to entertain if we have anybody on the board who want to entertain that motion. Or if we can, can we make the motion when we have the reading of the consent agenda? Is that okay by staff?
We can just move it to the consent for deferral.
All right. Thank you.
And that's to the June agenda?
Sorry?
Thirty days to the June agenda?
Yes. And that will be at no cost to the applicant.
Thank you. All right, Monty, go ahead with the reading of the consent agenda, and then we will do the voting at the end.
Okay. Also, before I-
Hold on, we have a- hold on, Monty.
I have a question about this. You said it may have something to do with the application. Does it have anything to do with the application or not?
Yes. I don't want to go into great detail because we haven't done a thorough review. But one of the allegations deals with the access, and this application is directly accessing part of the Phase Six Copper Run Drive. And now that is within the circuit court's discretion or jurisdiction.
Monty, if you will.
Also, we need to move item three, Z 9956, which shows up on your regular agenda. We need to move that to consent deferral. The applicant's out of town, and the staff notified the opponents that it was going to need to be deferred. So we'll move it.
Thank you.
So now with the reading of the consent agenda for the Little Rock Planning Commission meeting of May 9th, 2024. Item number one, S 1962, is being deferred to the June 13th agenda as the applicant needs to submit additional information to staff. Item two, Z 4159C, is being deferred to the June 13th agenda as the applicant failed to notify surrounding property owners as required. Item three, Z 9956, Trail Storage is going to be also deferred to June 13th as the applicant could not be here today. Item five, S 1963, is being deferred to the June 13th agenda at the request of the city attorney's office. Item eight, Z 1966, is being withdrawn without prejudice at the request of the applicant. Item nine, Z 9972, is being deferred to June 13th as the applicant failed to notify to complete the required notifications to surrounding property owners. Item 10, Z 9973, is being withdrawn at the request of the applicant. Item 11, Z 9974, is being deferred to June 13th as the applicant failed to complete required notifications to surrounding property owners. Item 12, Z 9975, is being deferred to June 13th as the applicant failed to complete the required notifications to surrounding property owners. Item 14, Z 9979, is being deferred to June 13th as the applicant failed to complete the required notifications to surrounding property owners. And item 16, Z 6237C, is being deferred to June 13th as the applicant failed to notify surrounding property owners. Next are the items on consent approval. Item four, Z 9947, Paranova LLC STR2 PDC for Connell Drive. Staff recommends approval of the PDC zoning request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number seven, S 1965, Track One Razorback Square Shopping Center, Replat 2500 Cantrell Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested replat subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 13, Z 9945, Little Rock Compassion Center Conditional Use Permit, 3815 West Roosevelt Road. Staff recommends approval of the Conditional Use Permit subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 15, Z 9980, Fletcher Valley Park Conditional Use Permit, west of Fletcher Valley Drive, north of Canis Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 17, Z 9978, a rezoning from R3 and C3 to R3, 2012 Washington Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested R3 rezoning. Item 18, Z 3125D, Whitewater Tavern Revised PDC, 2500 West 7th Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested revision to the existing PDC zoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 20, Z 9967, Little Rock Turnkey LLC, PDR 1624 and 1626 Brown Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDR zoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. And item 21, Z 9981, Pedaway Business District, Phase Four, PCD, 320 East 21st Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested PCD zoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Monty, for the reading of the consent agenda. I would like to open it up for any board members that have any comments or questions. And if not, I would like to entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read with all conditions within the Agenda Staff Report.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call voting, please? Brown?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Hodges? Lundey? McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad? Vogel?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Consent agenda has been approved. Thank you very much. If your item was on the consent approval or consent deferral, you are free to leave at this time. You're more than welcome to stay, but you are definitely welcome to leave at this time. We're going to move forward.
Chair Vickers? I may. Commissioner Lundey is on the way back. So just throw her if you'd make sure. Kind of, she wasn't there previously. We kind of went through it real quick. But Commissioner Lundey is here, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Jamie. All right. So to move forward to our regular agenda, we actually have two items this evening, this afternoon, excuse me, on them. We're going to go with item number six first, and then following that, we're going to have item number 19. So item number six, S dash one nine six four, is the applicant present? If so, you can make your way to the podium. And can we please have the reading for item number six?
Item number six, file number S 1964. This is Lot 12, Block 3, Capital View Replat, 117 Rice Street. The applicant proposes to replat Lot 12, Block 3, Capital View addition into two lots for the construction of two single-family residences. The property is currently undeveloped, mostly grass-covered. The property slopes downward from front to back, and a paved alley is located along the rear or east property line. The proposed lot sizes are as follows. Lot 12A would be 25.16 feet by 134.69 feet or 3377 square feet. Lot 12B would be 25.16 feet by 134.61 feet for 3375 square feet. Section 36255D4 of the city zoning ordinance requires a minimum lot width of 50 feet and a minimum lot area of 5,000 square feet for lots in R3 zoning. The applicant is requesting variances from this ordinance requirement to allow the reduced lot width and area. Section 31232B of the subdivision ordinance requires a residential lot to be no more than three times as deep as it is wide. The applicant is requesting a variance from this requirement to allow increased lot width-to-deep ratio for both lots. Staff is supportive of the requested replat or lot split to allow the construction of two single-family homes. There are examples of other smaller lots and lot splits, lot re combinations within this general area. Staff believes replat request is reasonable, and staff recommends approval of the requested preliminary replat, or, excuse me, the replat subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report.
Thank you, Monty. Applicant, can you please state your name for the record?
Roy Andrews, Holloway Engineering.
All right. So Andrews, would you like to go ahead and state your case? Or we have several cards in opposition. Would you like for the opposition to come up? And then you come up afterwards to answer any particular questions?
I'll yield to the opposition.
Thank you. So we have several cards here in place. And we have a, just to let everyone know for the record, for the applicant, you have a total up to 20 minutes. And for any opposition, we have a total of up to 20 minutes. So if there are 10 cards in opposition, and respectfully, each card will have two minutes of time or thereof, up to 20 minutes. So the first card is Stefan Erickson. Please come to the podium.
Hey. So we're opposed to this.
Yeah, please state your name for the record.
Stephen Erickson.
Yes, the floor is yours, Mr. Erickson.
Sure. We're opposed to this. We're excited about the new house across the street and how well it was built. And then when the other house burnt, it was taken down. I thought, well, maybe we'll get another single residence here because our street is so short. It's a one-way. There's parking on both sides. And the lot is, I don't know anything about feet or anything, but that's an extremely small lot. We cannot understand how two houses are going to go on that. It's going to interfere with the value of the brand-new house that was built to the north of it. And it's going to be very close to the house that is a multi-apartment to the south of it. So we do, we would really much rather have a single-family residence there. We feel like the lot is very small. And even with that, there's not much room for a single-family residence. We don't understand how two single-family residences can go in that lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card is Seth Jerigan, if I'm saying that correctly.
My name is Seth Jerigan. I live at 100 Rice Street. I also oppose this lot split. My wife and I moved into the neighborhood just six, five or six years ago and are looking at this being, you know, kind of a long-term home for us. And a lot split like this, like Stephen said, is detrimental to the neighborhood, in my opinion. If you're going to make a lot that narrow, then you have to go vertical. And I just don't see that improving our neighborhood at all, which decreases home values. It also crowds that street, which is already crowded pretty significantly. So if you figure each house will have more than likely two cars added to it, I don't know where those cars are going to go, especially if you're making that, if you're having to expand front to back on the lot, there's not going to be parking in the rear or much space for it at all, which impacts neighbors to the rear. And, you know, if I want this neighborhood to continue and improve on the path that I think that it is, like Stephen said, with the new house that was being built, that is built, that is great. It fits him well with the neighborhood. I don't know how this, these two split-lot houses are going to merge with the overall charm of a very historic neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you. The next card we have is, it's difficult to read the first name, but the last name is Wilcox. Looks like it may be Liz or Lisa. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Lisa Wilcox, and I live on 110 Rice Street. We've been there 10 years. And the infrastructure on the street can just not hold two homes there, as he said. You know, we, there's no parking. The garbage truck cannot get through. There is just no space. And the owner from 115 Rice Street couldn't be here today, Jimmy Owens. And he's also opposed to it. And he said he didn't even get a letter. But we just, we don't have the infrastructure to hold extra cars to that value. So please, for our property value and for our street, please, we would like to have it to be a single home. President, thank you.
Thank you. The next card is Scott Jones. Right there, right there, Mr. Jones.
To your right, there you go. All right, Scott Jones. I oppose. I think everyone else has stated a very good case so far. I'll just add to it that as it stands right now, I literally have two cars parked in front of my house. I obviously don't drive them. That's how crowded it is. I use paratransit. The vans can't come down my street as it is now. So I have to go down to another street to be able to catch a ride. So just kind of letting you know what the impact is. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And the last card we have is Tom McEvin.
My name is Tom McGuire. I live at 114 Rice Street. Commissioners, staff, and city attorneys, appreciate your time. This lot, 117, is set empty for two years. An offer was made two years ago by the owner of 115 to purchase the lot, and mine is second-hand, excuse me, to purchase a lot and put a single-family home on it. That was rebuffed and turned down. And now, your, the, this plan is to put two single-family homes and split that lot in half. So it means you're going vertical, like Seth talked about. Those homes will now encroach on that new remodeled house at 115. They'll encroach at 119. And in my opinion, it'll be an eyesore to the neighborhood. As Lisa Wilcox announced, stated earlier, we spoke to Jimmy Owens last night. He stated that he has not received a letter about this replating and possible encroachment upon his property at 115 Rice. He is out of town today, and he can't be here to state that himself. They've already talked about parking, appearance. If you split this lot, I have this off-the-wall question. If you split this 117, what's the address going to be? There's 115, 119. What's, what are you going to do? 117A, 117B? And then Capital View as a neighborhood as a whole is not an industrial neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood of working-class people. And putting vertical container-type houses in the neighborhood has no benefit to the neighborhood at all. They're going to be jammed up next to each other individually and to their neighbors to the north and south. And there's, in my opinion, there's no need to split the lot and basically stack one amount to shotgun houses on top of each other to create a home in a 25-foot lot. Others in the neighborhood have also, I spoke with, can't be here today because they're out of town, dealing with family members and others. They're directly, and 116 is right across from 117. She's not going to be happy about a lot being split in front of her house. She's not here right now. She has two cars that others are using to park on the street. So if it's going to be a single-family house, we're all for that. If it's going to be two container-looking shotgun houses stacked on top of each other, we're going to oppose it in any way we can. Whether it's through y'all or through other means. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, sir. The gentleman you said that's not here today, his name?
Jimmy Owens.
Thank you.
He's the owner of 115 Rice. He's the one that just remodeled it and has it on the market for sale. So he's very interested in what's going up next to him. And also, I was asked to say that about my house. My house is on the National Historic Register. My grandfather built the house. It's the first house in Capital View. My father was built, born in the house. So I have a long history in the house and in the neighborhood. And again, if it was a single-family house, I'd be all for it. But if it's going to be two shotgun houses-type houses stacked on top of each other in two different lots encroaching on my neighbors, I'm not going to be happy with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, at the time, we want to bring back up the applicant, Mr. Andrews. Please feel free to come back up and feel free to answer any type of comment or address any concerns that the opposition had.
Thank you. Couple of comments. With the alleyway and the rear of the property and the topography slopes off to the rear, the developer or builder is intending to put garages and driveways in the back. As the people spoke before me, yes, parking is limited on the street. And whether you restrict it to one lot, two lots, or whatever, you're, you can only get so many vehicles on that street. There's just so much parallel parking. So this builder wants to build garage, garages in the lower level. Actually, the street where you look and where the entrance is from the alleyway is a level below. And so they intend to build parking driveways in the back so that the residents don't have to park in the roadway to allow more access that way. This is a quaint street, a quiet. And I get it, all of those places in that area, it is very tight. This builder has done other properties in midtown, whether Chester Street or whatever. And this type of residence brings affordable housing. It's something to the market that this builder has found that the market is invested in and the market is seeking to buy. And that's why they chose to build this type of house versus a duplex versus a larger house. They're just trying to bring something affordable to the market. And that's why they chose the size. You can say that it's somewhat like a shotgun house, but it is very nice. And that's something that we could provide if that was a question. Otherwise, I have no, I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, I want to open the floor up to the board to see if you have any particular questions for the applicant at this particular time. Just go ahead.
Yes. So you're going to build a driveway from Rice to the back road or?
No, sir, from the alleyway into the back of the house, yes.
You're going to build a driveway so residents would have to come down an alleyway to get to both residences or?
That is, that is correct. There's, I haven't looked at every house along Rice Street, but most of those houses do not have driveways off the front. They're, they're in the back, if they have a driveway at all. People, a lot of people do park on the street. Most of that neighborhood parks along the street or they have alleyway entrances into the rear. So yes, they would build driveways off the back alleyway. There's no way to get it in from the front. The style that they're building, you're not looking at a, if it were 15 feet from the street, you'd be looking at a garage, and that's not what they want. They want you to see the house and see the character that the rest of the neighborhood has.
Yeah, I get it. I'm just, I'm wondering, the house that's closest to Rice, if you, for a resident to drive in from the alleyway, are they just going to have to walk around the house that's closer to the alleyway to get to the house that's closer on Rice?
So, so the front of the house would be facing Rice?
Yeah, they both park in the rear.
They would both park in the rear. Yeah, these are both facing Rice Street, and would both have sidewalks off the public sidewalk?
They're single-family homes.
They're single-family homes. They're just narrow homes. Some cities call them tall and skinnies.
Really skinny.
So yes, they would have a front door and a porch that's facing Rice Street. And for a visitor, or if there were parallel parking along the street, they would park there. But if a residence lives there, they're going to go to Rice Street, or go to the alleyway off of like West 2nd Street and come in the alleyway and park in their driveway from behind the house.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel, go ahead.
Yes, I have a couple of questions for staff first. You mentioned in the reading that there was a few other lots this size in the neighborhood. Is that correct?
If you, if you continue to zoom out from this property, you're going to find evidence of, of lots that have been split up over the years and combined and recombined.
So what is the setback requirement on a lot this size since they're seeking the variance?
The setbacks will be pretty much the normal setbacks for R3, 10% of the lot width. Actually, he's going a little bit more than 10% of the lot width for the side setbacks will be three feet. And then the front side setbacks will be standard 25.
So for the engineer, correct?
Yes.
How wide are these homes going to be?
Typically, these homes are around 15 to 18 feet wide.
15 to 18 feet wide. Okay. Thank you.
All right, Monty?
Also, continuing on what that, what I was saying, the buildable area for each of these lots is 19 by 84, which is right at 1,600 square feet.
19 by 84 minus the three, so 13 feet.
No, no, that is the buildable area.
Okay, I'm sorry. You took out the six.
Chair, if I may. Jamie, you had a question?
Yeah, I was wanting to just make a staff statement for the commission. What we are here to hear tonight is a plat. So when we talk about building square foot areas, it is the setback. It's the building area within the setback. We are not setting the style of home, the looks of home, whether you call it a shotgun-style home. The zoning remains the same. It is R3. They're allowed to build 35-foot height max per the code They're allowed to build 35-foot height max per the code as measured from the roadway, not necessarily from the alleyway. I understand it may drop off. And so there are certain measurements that are done per that plat. That's governed underneath the building when they come in and get a building permit. So there is no conditions that is applied on the plat. There is, this is not a planned development. It is just a subdivision plat. And they're allowed to build, if plat's approved, they will be allowed to build per whatever the building square foot area is shown on the plat to whatever the maximum height that's allowed per the zoning code. And then there is no other conditions that are applied.
Thank you. Do we have any other particular questions or? All right, go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
Given that there's a potential, and this is to the applicant, given that there is a, there have been some potential concerns raised by the neighbors, is there any particular reason why the builder is wanting to split this versus just having it be, this is a fairly narrow spot. What's the driver on wanting to split it versus just do a single-family there? Or do we even know?
Just to bring a more affordable housing to the market. This, this builder is building this on other properties in the midtown area and has found that it meets the market demand and has found these, this lot and believes that it's something that the market wants.
Okay. Commissioner, any other commissioners that have any particular questions or comments?
I have one.
Yes, go ahead.
So I noticed on the maps that we have that the alley is a private alley. I just, I recall we had an application a while ago where there were some difficulties around parking because of access to the private alley. And I just wanted to check, because a lot of concerns that were raised related to parking is, do these, does this plat have rights and access to this alleyway such that you could kind of park sort of in the, in the back rather than on the street?
I think the question is, is this a public or a private alley?
Well, it says, our map says it's private, but so I'm, I'm kind of wondering if, whether we know that the plat has kind of access to it or rights to it.
The property has access to it, but they do not have rights to park in the alleyway. But they do have.
Yeah, but they could, they won't have like an permit to use it.
Whether or not all of the owners have access to the alley so that they can park on their lot.
Yes, it's our understanding based on research, total research, this property has access to that alleyway to use it for access to their property.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I have a question of.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Mr. Jernigan, Ms. Wilcox, no, Mr. Owens couldn't make it, Mr. Jones, was it Mr. McGuire? So you all are neighbors and have lived on this street collectively quite some time.
Most of my 65 years, yes.
Yes, sir. So just looking at this, I haven't been on Rice Street for a few weeks, maybe a few months, but just doing a Google Earth, it does look like that some of these homes are in a state of relative disrepair. And I know that y'all were talking about land values and increasing land values. So I'm just curious what your thoughts, even though you might not like this particular design, do you think that the new construction could bring some new life into the neighborhood?
I don't think so because, because as they said, parking's off the back, but that will help if they put garages in the back if they're big enough for two cars because most people, if there's a couple, they're going to have two cars. So somebody's parking in the front, somebody's going to be parking in the back.
So on Capitol, they built two homes on one lot. Each home they are charging, they are on the market for $325,000. And they are only 1,600 square feet. So providing cheap, affordable homing, it's, I don't believe it. I just don't see that, that that is what's going to happen. I understand they're trying to make money, but for our neighborhood, for to maintain our value of our homes, 115 is on the market for $515,000. Now he wants to build and get three feet away from that beautiful home? And you have to look out your window and you see this big container-type home. It really does affect our neighborhood. It affects our value of our property and all the neighbors. We all know each other. We're all friends. We all visit together. And we just really would like to maintain what our neighborhood is. It's a neighborhood. We visit, we help each other out all the time. It would really help us for it to be a single-family residence, please.
Yeah. I don't think it's in the best interest of the neighborhood. The neighbors right around it, and I don't think it's the best interest of the neighborhood as well. It doesn't add anything to the neighborhood besides two houses that are $200,000, $300,000 apiece that, you know, to me, it's a transitory-type house. It's not somebody, somebody can move in and stay. They have no yard, they have no nothing. As far as the commissioner was questioned about the alley, it is a private, it is a public alley. The homeowners behind 117, 115, 119 all have privacy fences, wooden privacy fences. Two of them, I think, are at the property line, one's inset. So backing in and out of an alley, the alley comes downhill to 115, to 117, backing out could be an issue. I know that Scott has problems with, there's an Airbnb on Denison Street, and they routinely back up into his yard, his fence is inset. They've run over his roses. They've backed into his fence. So that's, that could be an issue for the many people on Denison. I don't know that, but it could be. But I'd be, like I said earlier, I'd be all for a single-family house on one lot. Splitting this lot, building vertically, it's just, I don't think the way to go.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews, I had actually a question. Could you come back up to the podium, please?
Yes, sir.
Now, I heard on two different things, it was outlined, is the back, is it, is it designed for a garage or is it a driveway?
There would be a driveway to the garage.
Okay, so a driveway to the garage. And how long again was the driveway?
I'm not sure on the total.
You don't have the, you don't have the final, okay.
No, sir, but the building setback in the back in the rear of the property is 25 feet, so it'd have to be a minimum of 25 feet off the alleyway.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of things to say.
Commissioner, go ahead.
So in looking at this application, based on the zoning code, which is the only reason that we're here, the only thing that the applicant is asking for is a reduction for the side yard setbacks from five feet to three feet. It is a total lot width variance of four feet. If this remained as it is, they could build within five feet of the existing setbacks, one home. This builder, this developer is wanting to provide two homes with, as staff has stated, a reasonable reduction in the side yard setbacks. The front and side yard setbacks stay the same, and all other requirements of a single-family home in the R3 zone stay the same. If the lot stayed single, somebody could build 35 feet in height. Imagine that for a second. It's three and a half stories, and they would be well within the zoning code and would not even need a variance. We are talking about a difference of two feet. I, for one, am in favor of this application. I think it is good for the neighborhood. It's good for development in La Rock. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm sorry, go ahead, Monty, did you have a comment?
For the record, there is a variance requested for lot width. There's not a variance requested for lot setback on the sides. The side setbacks, based on the proposed lots, will conform.
Right, but based on conformity, if it was a 50, 50-foot width, it would be five feet. Because if it's 25, it would actually only be two and a half.
That's correct. Yep.
All right, thank you, Monty. Do we have any other questions or comments from the board?
I'll ask one question, Mr. Andrews. So as the planning commission, we're tasked with considering these things, including the, please correct me if I'm wrong, the general welfare, health, and safety of the community. So you mentioned affordable housing. Obviously, you don't have the exact specs, but somewhere along the lines of 15 feet wide, how many square feet? I assume there are going to be what, two stories, three stories? It's a total of 19 feet.
Just two stories is what they've typically built from a living standpoint, living space standpoint. I don't have the total square footage, no, sir.
Got it. And any estimate of price per square foot? No idea.
I don't have an idea.
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Any of the commissioners?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, sir. Just give us a minute here. Normally, on the card, you're required to speak unless another commissioner asks you to come back up to speak. But sir, since you're up at the podium, go ahead and just restate your name for the record, and we will give you just a short amount of time to speak. Go ahead.
I'm a physician in town, lived at 110 for 10 years. When I saw the two stakes going up on this, I thought it was a mistake. It's an extremely small lot, and it's a very crowded street. And Mr. Owens did such a beautiful job in bringing back, instead of a three-apartment facility, a house, a one-family house that's going to be three feet away from the next house? That's hardly not even enough to walk between the houses. I don't understand this at all. And again, I'm looking at this map, I'm saying, go out there and look at this lot. There's just no way this is good for the neighborhood. And we take care of ourselves in that neighborhood, from watching the people come up and down the street to telling people that this is the problem here and this is a problem there. And again, I'm shocked at anybody that wants to put two different facilities in this lot. Go look at it. It's, it's miniscule.
Thank you.
To clarify, it will not be three feet from the neighboring home. It will be three feet from the property line.
The property line, Jimmy has built on his property line.
And he did so illegally.
All right, so we want to move forward here because we want to keep things on accordance. Any other comments, questions from the board? And if not, we want to make a motion here.
Make a motion to approve as submitted with staff's comments and recommendations in the staff agenda report.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the table and a second here. Can please get a roll call for voting for item number six, S-1964, please. Brown?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Commissioner Hodges.
Lundey?
I'm not going to rush through with this, I'm sorry.
Yes.
McDonald?
No.
Person?
Person?
No.
Samot? Commissioner Samot. Vogel?
No.
Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five. That's five votes, the motion fails. All right, item number six, motion fails, S/1964. Applicant definitely thanks for coming out, and thank everybody for coming out on this issue. And you're more than welcome to stay, but you're definitely free to leave at this particular time. And we're going to move on to our last, Mr. Chair.
What was the tally of the votes? Can we request that?
Five, four.
Torrance, could you, it was five, four, but can you state that for the record, Torrance?
Sure. I got four yes votes. I got one, two, three, four, five yes, one, two, three, four no, and two absents.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. It's five yes and four no?
So it passes.
So how did the motion fail?
You need six votes, sir.
Six.
You need six yes affirmative votes.
Did anyone abstain or were they not?
Two not present.
We have two absent.
Nine total.
Can we, sorry, sorry, because there were some issues earlier with my vote, I just want to make sure, kind of, I don't know if it's possible to get kind of the actual roll call. Just, I'm not marked as absent, right?
Commissioner Lundey, your vote is affirmative for this item.
Okay, yeah.
Before we move on, I'd like to make a motion to expunge the previous vote and reopen the application for discussion.
Second. Well, we have a motion on the table and a second to reopen. So at this particular time, the previous vote.
What's the purpose of the revote? Just, was there not enough clarity on the first vote? Yes, I'd like to have a discussion with the commissioners and find out exactly what their reasoning for a denial was. Okay.
It's, if it's been, if it's been raised, Commissioner Hart, Todd, if it's been raised, I guess we have to open it back up unless we want to have a, unless we want to have a brief discussion amongst the board.
Well, once, once the vote has been cast.
Yeah, well, there is, well, there is, we can't, but the motion has been on the table and a second to reopen the, to open discussion back up for further talks.
So we have to vote on this motion to expunge and reopen?
Yeah, so we have a motion, so we have a voting on that to reopen this back up. So Torrance, if you will, we have a motion on the table to reopen, item number six, S-1964, back open for discussion to make certain that all of the commissioners understand the issue at hand on the table. So if we can get a, just a quick roll call voting for this, so we can reopen this back up to make certain that everybody got the full understanding of item number six.
So a yes means we'll talk about it some more and a no means we will not?
Correct, yeah.
And then also to clarify, to talk about it more and to revote.
You ready for the roll call? Yes, please. Brown?
No.
Hart?
No.
Hodges?
Commissioner Hodges.
Lundey?
No.
McDonald?
No.
Person?
No.
Samot?
Commissioner Samot.
Vogel?
No.
Baxter?
Aye.
Vickers?
No.
The vote would not be expunged. The previous vote for denials has been approved, be approved. I don't have six votes for, to expunge the vote, to open up for discussion and take a vote again. We need six votes to expunge it.
All right. All right, thank you. So the motion stands. The item number six was denied. Item number six, S-1964, was denied. Thank you definitely for submitting and coming out. And we're going to move forward right along to our last item on the agenda. It's item number nine, is the, excuse me, not nine, item number 19, Z-6911-A. Is the applicant present? If so, please make your way to the podium, and we will have the reading. Eric Richardson? Richardson Engineering? Mr. Eric Richardson, are you in the room?
He was here. I saw him.
All right, we will give one minute, and let me see if the applicant has stepped outside.
Brad, was he here? Was he here earlier?
He, yes, he was in the audience earlier.
Okay.
Before or after the consent?
Yes, yes.
So Brad, you said he left after the reading of the consent agenda?
I am going to assume that's what happened, but I did notice, I know Eric, and I did see him in the audience.
No.
So I guess at this point, we will have to do, I mean, I don't, I don't want to speak for the applicant. I'm just maybe assuming he was under the impression, I don't want to assume that he was under the impression that it may have already been approved, and so he left, so maybe we can defer this to the next meeting? That's correct. Or put it on the next.
You typically defer it in this case?
Yes, okay.
Make a motion to defer.
Second. All right, so we have a motion on the table, a motion and a second to defer item number 19, Z-6911-A to our next agenda meeting, which is next month, which will be June. And can we get a roll call for that deferment, please, Torrance? Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Hodges?
No.
The vote would not be expunged. The previous vote for denials has been approved, be approved. I don't have six votes for, to expunge the vote, to open up for discussion and take a vote again. We need six votes to expunge it.
All right. All right, thank you. So the motion stands. The item number six was denied. Item number six, S-1964, was denied. Thank you definitely for submitting and coming out. And we're going to move forward right along to our last item on the agenda. It's item number nine, is the, excuse me, not nine, item number 19, Z-6911-A. Is the applicant present? If so, please make your way to the podium, and we will have the reading. Eric Richardson? Richardson Engineering? Mr. Eric Richardson, are you in the room?
He was here. I saw him.
All right, we will give one minute, and let me see if the applicant has stepped
Commissioner Hodges? Lundey?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad? Commissioner Samad? Vogel?
Yes.
Baxter? Russell?
Staying in protest.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion passes to defer to item to the June agenda. All right, thank you. All right, we have Monte, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to just kind of, kind of talk about that last item that you heard real briefly.
Please.
This commission has approved similar lot splits in the past, at least two or three fairly recently. There seems to be a growing interest in more density, in especially the older areas of Little Rock. And I'd just kind of like to point out, you guys approved a lot split, it's on the east side of Chester, between, I believe it's 15th and 16th, and they've already built the houses on, on those two lots. It's a 50-foot wide lot, just like this one, it's 50-foot wide lot, and you're probably gonna see more of these as we go forward. So I would encourage you to go by that, that property, again, the east side of Chester, between 15th and 16th, and look at those two houses, and I think you'll get a really good idea of what, kind of, kind of what, instead of envisioning it, you'll get to see, you know, what, how they build those, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say that.
And I've, I've seen them in other cities, when you, you know, when I travel and I see other cities, and it can add a little bit, you know, modernity and still keep up the, because I was, when the, I think Ms. Wilcox was stating that these homes are not affordable, but I was saying, well, it could be potentially raising the value of it, and what's the price per square feet of it? So it was a lot of different variables that, you know, could have went in it, so I definitely understand your point of view. And somebody say anything else?
I was just gonna say, my concern was with the gentleman that said that the bus that he has, that comes to his house couldn't get to his house, because that's a one-way street and it's so congested, and so I was concerned with that aspect of it.
Now, before we, before we move on or to any other things or adjourn, I just want to say this real quick, I know we voted not to kind of speak on it, but I just want to take just a couple of minutes and just ask any, on the last item, to discuss briefly, maybe some other feedback. And Monte, you stated something about the houses and things like that, does anybody have any other, Vice Chair, did you have any other statements or opinions or comments on that last item?
I would defer that a statute that once an item has been discussed, a motion has been made, seconded and voted on, that it is imprudent of us to discuss it afterwards.
Okay, all right. Any, any other commissioner, or, go ahead, Sean, I think you was about to say something, go ahead, please.
You know, I, I love communication, and I think this, this topic would be best discussed, probably at our retreat, because as the commissioner stated, we're still discussing somewhat of the application, and so anything that we say on the record, if the applicant wants to appeal this, could affect a decision. So I would just ask the commission to table this until maybe the retreat or have further discussions outside of this particular moment right now, if that's possible.
No, thank you very much. All right, so moving along, did, any commissioners have any other questions, comments?
I have two. First, I want to thank staff very much for this heat map on the short-term rental ordinances, it's very helpful to see where the density is. Thank you very much for providing that. And then second, kind of, to the reading process, I think it'd be helpful for applicants if we made an overt statement that item six and 19 are coming off of the consent reading. Before we read the consent, it's hard in a group of people to focus, you know, line item by line item. They might get, as we might have noticed already today, swept up and thinking everything's okay, and they leave, and then we don't get to conduct our business as we need to, and that causes delay and further, so I don't know if we can change the process of how we inform the applicants that they did not make the consent agenda, that there is a card for them, just a statement, I think that's happened a couple times recently, so just, just an observation.
So just to be clear, you're saying, when staff is reading or about to read, they can just say, hey, this, this is coming off the consent approval to the regular agenda?
I don't know how to get the attention best of the applicant, seems like an overt statement might need to be said, it's just an off-the-cuff observation. I know when I, when Monte reads these, I go each line item and check them off, and then when I get, when he gets to the line item that is not on the consent approval, I circle it, knowing that we're gonna come back to it, and I don't know if everybody in the audience is doing that same meticulous verification.
Okay.
I tend to, I tend to agree with that, Monte, maybe at the, at the beginning of the hearing, before we read the list of items that have already been removed and are not on the consent agenda, maybe just make an announcement, the following items that were on the consent or regular agenda have been removed or deferred, and then list them, that might, as he said, it might help with some of the confusion that we've had recently.
Yeah, just to back that up, any changes from the consent agenda to regular agenda? We should say this upfront, not speaking as an applicant, but as someone who's been a opposition in the past, prior to being on the board before, there have been times where something got moved around, and people didn't realize that, and either left or stayed the whole time, not only they didn't have to, so it's just, I think, as a courtesy to our constituents, is the right word for it?
Yeah.
Constituents, make that very explicit upfront, because particularly lately, we've had a lot of stuff on here. So clearer we can make it, the better.
Even, even I do the same thing, like, because I don't, I don't know what's being moved off the consent agenda until I get here and I'm a commissioner, because people submit cards. So I go through and I highlight, you know, what's being removed, they don't have that benefit.
I think it's a confusing process for the constituent on a given day anyway, because they're not as familiar with the process that we use, so it's a steep learning curve that might have impact, so just a thought, but thank you for the time.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or any other business?
Public comment?
Yes. Any comments from the, the public? If not...
I have a question.
Commissioner McDonald, go ahead.
Yes, I'm aware that tomorrow is the deadline to apply for boards and commissions, and I was wondering, how do, do, if you're on the commission now and your term is going to be up, do you need to replod, or?
Yes.
Okay. Because it's showing no vacancies, so I didn't know if it was already filled, or...
Yes, currently, if, I would say if you're, if you're expiring three months from now, then the answer is no. They're trying to fill vacant positions that are vacant as of now, is, is, but if you're coming up, like next month of expiring, and I don't know, we'll have to, Monte, you know that?
All, all terms expire in November.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I would say, like, right now, no, you wouldn't need to for November, they're only looking at what is vacant right now.
Usually what I've had to do in the past is just send an email to city staff saying I would like to be reappointed, and they just pull the same application.
Yeah, if you got the same application, so they would look at the time of when your term is up.
Okay, I just didn't want the deadline to approach, and then, you know, I wouldn't be able to because of the deadline.
No, y'all think you were fine?
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments? If not, this meeting is adjourned.